Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of July 11th, 2016. Before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silent meditation, I think it's just important to acknowledge that since the last time we met, we've had a number of tragic incidences across the country and in our own community. So as we rise during this moment of silent meditation, I think it's important to reflect on how we keep each other safe and how each of us might do a little more to realize the vision that we're pledging to, a vision of a nation that is indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So now let us please rise from that pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the chambers. The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, and then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal, and each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether or not you're speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Before we move on to the public hearing, we do have a special presentation from the mayor and a word of excellence. I invite the mayor to come forward.
This is my second non-controversial item for the day in front of you. The Mayor's Award for Excellence for April is presented to Kelly Devila from the Communications Division of the Police Department. Kelly was nominated in the category of productivity by Communications Coordinator Julie Ryder-Dove for her work to develop the PulsePoint application. Kelly served as the lead for the city on the implementation of the PulsePoint smartphone app that is now being used by more than 8,700 people in the Lincoln area. PulsePoint connects those trained in CPR with those who suffer sudden cardiac arrest in public places, notifies those trained within a quarter mile of the location. Lincoln was the first city in the region to implement the app, which also displays the location of the nearest AED. PulsePoint also provides a real-time display of all Lincoln Fire and Rescue dispatches and public safety radio communications. Ryder-Dove said this provides the public with a virtual window into fire and emergency medical service activity in the community, offering a unique opportunity for civic engagement and transparency. She also said that Devila worked diligently over the course of several months to ensure the accuracy and the development, the appropriate development of the information to be provided to the public. So it's my pleasure to present Kelly Devila with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for April. Please join me in congratulating her for hard work and she makes great progress. And I think Police Chief Blimeister is here today. Jeff would like to say a few words.
Kelly, on behalf of all the members of the Lincoln Police Department, congratulations for earning this award. Kelly told me a short time ago, she's been with the city and served us since 1989, and I can personally attest that oftentimes in law enforcement, we don't do a good enough job of including the dispatchers and all the support that they provide our agency and our officers. So this is one example of the hard work and diligence that serve all of our community, but more importantly, it's incumbent upon us and me to make sure that that recognition, that is so well-deserved, comes to Kelly and her peers. Thank you.
Would you like to address the council?
No, thank you.
You don't have to answer today, do you, or do you? Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, as we move back into the public, as we move into the public hearing portion of our agenda, I'll just remind folks that testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. As a reminder, the timer will sound after four minutes. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, and then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to that item.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
After all the public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed
Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk
under third reading. And on the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone
to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses.
may speak on any issue not on the agenda for today nor planned for a future agenda.
Applicants or witnesses are not required to stay for the voting session. I'll call item number seventeen, manager application of Richard Ridgeway for the various
Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Yes, our first item will be our public hearing consent agenda, items one through liquor shops throughout town. Would you raise your right hand? sixteen.
If there are anyone wishing to speak on any of these items on our consent agenda.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you
Okay, seeing none, please call the next item.
rarely believe it to be? All right, if not, we can vote on these items.
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Ridgeway.
Items one through six were introduced by Fellers.
My address is 5,001 North 25th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
So moved.
Seconded by John. Welcome, and before we move on to your items, I do want to say on behalf of the Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb.
council that we're very sorry for the loss of your colleague.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
I understand that you don't oversee that shop, but we are all broken-hearted and assume
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
that the LPD is working very hard to resolve the case.
Fellers.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Gaylor Baird.
Please tell us a little bit about your application.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
I oversee stores 632, and I'll kind of go through the list on 632, which is on Fremont
Items ten through twelve were introduced by Lamb.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
and Tuzlin, store 634, which is on 14th and Adams, store 635, which is on First and Cornhusker,
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
641, which is on 48th and Madison, 650, which is on 56th and Holdridge, 680, which is on 14th and Cotner, I think, 84th and Cotner maybe, and 663, which is on 4400 Cornhusker. Sorry, bear with me, I'm new in the community, so I'm trying to know the addresses off the top of my head.
You're doing great.
All I'm doing is today is to try to get my liquor license to be able to be over the stores. And I can tell you, they'll be under great hands with myself.
Any questions from the council? Right, John?
I think on the information we received, it mentioned that you had not yet completed the alcohol manager training. Do you have that scheduled?
Yes.
When would that be?
It'll be for the 14th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, Teresa, please call the next item.
All right, next is item eighteen, manager application of Dale Dauenhauer for Walmart Stores, doing business as Walmart number 2432 at 2,500 Jamie Lane. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Dale Dauenhauer, live at 9,300 South 32nd Street, and I am here on behalf of Walmart on 27th and Pine Lake Road.
Welcome. Please tell us a little more about your application.
I am here just to have my name put on the liquor license for the store, being that I am the store manager, being the responsible person in the building.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you for coming down today. Would anyone else like to speak to this item on our agenda? All right, seeing none, Teresa, please call the next item.
All right, next is item nineteen, manager application of Jason Johnson for the Embassy Suites at 1040 P Street.
Hello.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Dale Dauenhauer, live at 9,300 South 32nd Street, and I am here on behalf of Walmart on 27th and Pine Lake Road.
Welcome. Please tell us a little more about your application.
I am here just to have my name put on the liquor license for the store, being that I am the store manager, being the responsible person in the building.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you for coming down. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, Teresa, please call the next item.
Yes, next would be item twenty, application of Imperial Brewing Company for an SDL to cover an indoor area measuring approximately 70 feet by 70 feet and an outdoor area measuring approximately 50 feet by 50 feet at 300 South 7th Street on July 21st from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. No oath on SDLs.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi, thanks.
Please tell us a little bit about your event.
Well, my name is Angela Tucci. I work with Imperial Brewing Company. We've partnered with Moran's and Cycle Works for this event. This is the fourth one we've done, this will be the fourth one we've done this year out of six. We're doing kind of one a month during the summer months, and we invite cyclists down to the brewery, and we feature a different fundraiser and craft brewery each month. So this will be our one for July.
Any questions from council? All right, good luck with the event, thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Teresa, please call the next.
All right, next is item twenty-one, application of Lincoln Children's Zoo for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 1,500 feet by 400 feet at 1222 South 27th Street on July 16th from 6:00 p.m. to midnight.
Hi, my name is John Chapo, 2340 Stockwell Street, representing the Lincoln Children's Zoo. The event is a fundraiser event at the zoo, an adult-only event, brews at the zoo, and it's supported by local brewers, where we will allow people to enjoy the zoo, enjoy some local brewers, and enjoy some local music, and raise money for the zoo.
Any questions from council? Is this the first time you've done this event?
No, actually, it's probably about the fifth time.
Okay.
It's been very, very, very popular. We have security on, we hire security, so it's, and we've got a great perimeter fence that controls things, too.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Good luck. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, Teresa, please call the next one.
All right, item twenty-two is application of Kurt Contour, doing business as 501 Bar and Grill for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 73 feet by 90 feet in the parking lot at 501 West A Street on July 16th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Hi, Kurt Contour, doing business as 501 Bar and Grill on 501 West A Street. This is the fourth year we're doing this event. It's a fundraiser for Seeing Eye Dogs of America. It's a poker running fundraiser for, they call it Hogs for Dogs, and it's a fundraiser we've done the last three years.
Good. Any questions? What are the hogs? I get the dogs. Oh, I thought it was bacon, sorry. All right, thank you very much for coming down. Good luck. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, next item, please.
All right, next is item twenty-three, application of Myers Wine Incorporated, doing business as Myers Cork and Bottle for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 1,500 feet by 100 feet in the parking lot at 8,600 Executive Woods Drive on July 21st from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And I would note for the record that I will request denial due to the activities of the event, which include outdoor music, does not meet the zoning requirements.
Teresa, can I ask that you not record denial until after I say they're no longer having the music?
Okay, that's better.
Thank you. Kevin Meyer, Myers Cork and Bottle, 13th and South Street. We were hired by Gary Pickering, formerly known as Pickering Creative Group, they're now called Anonymous. They are essentially the figurehead of this, the local businesses of that business park are wanting to do a family event just for their employees. It's not open to the public. They did want to have some music, come to find out that they're not zoned for that, so they have since had to scrap the music or scrap the SDL. In this case, they chose to scrap the music. So we're a third-party vendor, but basically, they've hired us so that it, the beverages aren't on their own dime, people will pay as they go, and it is a family-friendly event. We do card and wristband all the adults, and like I said, it is not open to the public. It's a private event. But they are outdoors, and they will have it enclosed with a security fence.
Any questions?
Staff, please.
Pardon?
We could have staff.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
Request for staff. Jeff, could you approach, I assume?
Jeff, if you want, Investigator Schaefer.
Oh, sorry, Schaefer, sorry. Come on in.
Or Chad.
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 Or Chad.
Oh, sorry.
If you're staff, please come forward.
Come on, God.
Chad, Paul Hobell in Safety.
So the concern was that this area was zoned in such a way that they could not have outdoor music, is that correct?
Correct, there, we had to look at the, you had to fit the use into one of the available use groups in the zoning code, and the two available, two that could be considered, that would, that this use would fit into the outdoor entertainment, live music, whatever, neither of which allowed that type of use in that zone, which is O3.
Okay, so taking away the outdoor music and entertainment that they are doing, then there's no problem?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I actually do have a question for Jeff, if you don't mind coming up. Just so we know when we move into the voting session on this, would that require a motion to amend that strikes the portion of the application that references the stage and request for banned? How do we handle the technical change when we move into voting session?
Jeff Kirkpatrick, city attorney, as I look at their form, their application, which is part of your, which is before you, I'm not seeing where it references live music other than the fact that...
There's a drawing with the stage.
With the stage, which could be a puppet show for all we know. They clearly were planning on having live music, but I don't think that by voting for this, as I read it, you give them permission to have live music.
Therefore...
And even if you had, it still wouldn't be zoned legally, so...
So no need to amend?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. All right, would anyone else like to testify to this item? Seeing none, Teresa, please call the next item.
All right, next is item twenty-four, application of Lincoln Pub Group for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 75 feet by 100 feet at Lincoln Hyde and Fur Building Parking Lot at 728 Q Street. This will be on all the home football Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to midnight.
I'm Amanda Peterson, 7040 South 88th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, and I'm here representing the End Zone Bar, requesting a beer garden permit.
Welcome. Any questions from council about this item? I think it's pretty straightforward.
I think so.
Thank you for coming down. You may go ahead and sit down. Anyone else wish to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, Teresa?
Madam Chair, I would move approval of a number of items here from seventeen through twenty-four.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Roy. Please call the roll, or sorry, discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Public hearing ordinance is second reading. Item twenty-five, amending section 9.24.110 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to allow electrically-charged fences to be installed for security purposes in association with the use of an alarm system, and repealing section 9.24.110 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing.
Would the applicant like to please come forward? Welcome back.
Well, thank you very much. A little windy here in Nebraska. I'm Michael Pate, I'm with the Electric Guard Dog, Columbia, South Carolina. There were a couple of...
Sorry, go ahead.
Keep going. ...a couple of changes that the city attorney ran through as far as zoning is concerned. We're fine with those. Usually, these particular devices are usually in industrial, maybe some heavy commercial areas. I can only think of a couple of instances where a heavily commercial area would actually use an electric security fence. Number one on that list would be probably some automobile repair installation. So as soon as we pass this, I'm sure we'll get an application for someone in one of those areas. That being said, we really appreciate everyone here that's helped us with this, particularly in the city staff and Jeff, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
Well, just want to review for us, how many other states have statutes that allow this?
I'm practically in every state in the Union. I'm even in Alaska and Hawaii. I think the only state I'm not in right now is South Dakota. That's because there's not an oil field there. We actually had legislation passed at the state level last year in California. Unanimous approval all the way through all the judiciary committees, as well as the Senate and the House over there. So every state I can possibly think of except South Dakota at this very moment. We're usually where the people are.
All right. Any other questions?
Same.
Okay, thank you very much for coming back.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this item? Anyone opposed? Any staff questions? Okay, I think we'll move on then, Teresa.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Our only public hearing ordinance on second reading was item twenty-five. Ordinance's third reading, item twenty-six, is approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and Auto-T Rentals LLC for the sale of city-owned property for $30,000, generally located at 1515 and 1525 North 15th Street. This was introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? I think this was an item we'd seen a number of applications, had not found the right fit for this property, and at last we have found the one that was just right, memory care facility for an area that is designated for this kind of purpose going forward, and we have a number of related items that we'll be looking at on voting in just a moment. Please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-eight is change of zone 16014, application of Highway 2 Development LLC for a change from AGR Agricultural Residential District to R3 Residential on property at 7601 Pine Lake Road, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-nine, special permit 16018, application of, oops, of Highway 2 Development LLC to allow the construction of a residential healthcare facility for up to 120 residents with an adjustment to exceed the maximum height from 35 feet to 44 feet at 7601 Pine Lake Road, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, next is item nineteen, manager application of Jason Johnson for the Embassy
Suites at 1040 P Street. Introduce by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion? Cindy?
Yes, I'd like to just say how pleased we are in northeast Lincoln to have this development going in. This is a very exciting thing for a lot of the residents in that corner. We're going to miss Tasty, and we already miss QP Hardware and Steve Murphy, but we're excited to see some things happening in that area, so, thank you.
All right, please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
between the city and Auto-T Rentals LLC for the sale of city-owned property for $30,000, generally located at 1515 and 1525 North 15th Street. This was introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-seven is annexation 16006, annexing approximately 7.88 acres of property generally located at 7601 Pine Lake Road, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? I think this was an item, we'd seen a number of applications, had not found the right fit for this property, and at last we have found the one that was just right, memory care facility for an area that is designated for this kind of purpose going forward, and we have a number of related items that we'll be looking at on voting in just a moment. Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-eight is change of zone 16014, application of Highway Two Development LLC for a change from AGR Agricultural Residential District to R3 Residential on property at 7601 Pine Lake Road, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by John. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-nine, special permit 16018, application of, oops, of Highway Two Development LLC to allow the construction of a residential healthcare facility for up to 120 residents with an adjustment to exceed the maximum height from 35 feet to 44 feet at 7601 Pine Lake Road, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item thirty-one, amending the fiscal year 1516 CIP to authorize and appropriate $2,454,600 in tip funds for the 48th and Holdridge Project, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Cindy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item thirty-two, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the 48th and Holdridge Redevelopment Project, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Cindy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item thirty-two, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the 48th and Holdridge Redevelopment Project, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Cindy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item thirty-three, street and alley vacation 16002, vacating the north-south alley in block 35 of Mills subdivision of blocks 34 and 35 to Uniplace from the north line of Holdridge Street to the north line of the existing east-west alley to the north, and vacating the east-west alley in said block 35 from the west line of 49th Street to the west line of existing north-south alley to the west, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item thirty-four, change of zone 16016, application of 48th Street Development for a change of zone from B1 Local Business District, H2 Highway District, and O2 Suburban Office District to B3 Commercial Business District, and designating said property as a planned unit development district, including waivers for stormwater detention, building height, setbacks, and screening and landscaping requirements at 48th and Holdridge, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Jane. Discussion?
We have a motion to amend. Motion to amend number one, which strikes the words "building permits" and adds the words "certificates of occupancy."
Can I get a second on the motion to amend? Seconded by Roy. Moved by Carl, seconded by Roy. Discussion on the motion to amend? All right, please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.